Welcome to all of you who are here in the Commissioners Auditorium and those of you who are out there in TV land. I'll call our meeting to order and we'll have our roll call and we have to do it by hand. And I think we just have one Commissioner out, Commissioner McGlaughlin.
And for this meeting, if you'd like to excuse him, you may.
Yes.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Melvin.
Okay, motion to excuse. Let's all vote, please. And Commissioner Huggins will do our invocation and Commissioner.
Fitzgerald.
Fitzgerald, thank you. It's been a long day. We got started at four, I'm sorry. We'll do our, I mean, our pledge.
Hello, we thank you for this day. We ask your guidance in our decision what we do here today that would be pleasing in your sight for your people here in Pitt County. In our blessing, we ask in your Son Jesus' name, say, "Amen."
Amen. Let me just say the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And those of you who are tuning in for our regular meeting, we are starting late. We had a budget workshop that went over the two hours we had planned, and that's why we're late. So we're going to change the order and go first to our presentations, and we'll start with our, oh, excuse me.
Madam Chair, if we can approve the agenda and also.
Oh, excuse me.
We want to have a closed session.
Okay. Yes.
Chair, I understand that there's supposed to be a closed session afterwards?
Yes, so we need to have that on the agenda. So is there a motion for approval of the agenda with an addition of closed session?
With the revised, with the movement of the agenda, the things that we do.
We don't have to do that, I don't think.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the closed session.
All in favor, please raise your hands. Now tell me what I'm, no, we'll, we'll have the Eagle Scout come forward first, and we'll come out front, and if you'd like to bring parents or anyone you have with you, you're welcome to do that. If you'll just go right in the front.
Madam Chair, if you'd like me to proceed, I can read the certificate.
Yes, please, welcome.
As well as state, as we do these recognitions in Pitt County, the number of Boy Scouts that actually earned the Eagle Scout designation is significantly higher than what is achieved in, we think, most other counties and states in the nation. And we have a very strong scouting program in Pitt County and proud of the accomplishments of all the young men. So, the Board of Commissioners has a certificate here to award to Robert Scott Curtis, and if you'd like me, I'll read.
Please.
Certificate of appreciation is awarded to Robert Scott Curtis for achieving the Eagle Scout Award for his project. He constructed four heavy-duty picnic tables for the 4A Club. This recognition is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners on this 20th day of May, 2019, signed by our Chairman Beth B. Ward. Ms. Ward, would you like to present that?
We're very proud of you, and thank you very much, and proud of your parents also. Thank you all for this. Congratulations, thank you.
We just have to go ahead and handle the proclamation.
Yes.
If we can ask the Green Light Community Action to come forward, we know we have you on later on the agenda, but we figured we'd go ahead and do your proclamation at this point in time. I think you have a presentation too, but.
Yes. We'll be hearing from him later in the meeting. Thank you.
So again, proclamation to present and read, if you'd like me to read this. Proclamation recognizing May 20, 2019, as Community Action Month, whereas Community Action has made essential contributions to individuals and families across this nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities, and whereas Community Action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in 99% of all of America's counties, and whereas Community Action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential part of enabling enhancing stronger communities and stable homes, and whereas Community Action promotes community-wide solutions to challenges through our cities, suburbs, and rural areas, whereas Community Action delivers innovative services and supports that create greater opportunities for families and children to succeed, and whereas Community Action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard, and whereas Community Action is celebrating 55 years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for Americans. Now therefore, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2019 as Community Action Month in Pitt County and commends its observance to all citizens. This is adopted this 20th day of May, signed by our Chairman Beth B. Ward and attested by our Clerk Kimberly W. Hines.
Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you very much. I really will.
Okay, next, if the clerk will come down, I think we're going to recognize the, I've got my agenda. The South Central Boys Varsity Basketball Team for their 2019 4A State Championship. If we can ask the coaches, players, volunteers, whoever's here.
If the players will come up and just, this principal in me is coming out, the retired principal, and just kind of make a semicircle all the way across in front.
Gee, anything, oh yeah. I'll get them ready.
All the way in, you know, kind of getting.
Yeah, excuse me.
Falcons.
Oh my. If you can scoot on down a little bit, just, keep on going down. Oh my gosh.
Oh my. How is he?
He's going to Carolina.
Wow, he's up there.
Y'all can scoot down a little bit more. Everybody on camera?
He's got another year to play, too.
Oh, wow.
You didn't see him this year?
He was good.
All right.
We'll get kind of him.
All right.
He's behind the camera, I can eat that.
Would you like to proceed?
Yes.
All right, we have this resolution, and we also have individual certificates for each of the players, coaches, as such, and if you'd like me, I will read.
Yes, please.
Okay. Pitt County Board of Commissioners, resolution of recognition honoring the South Central Varsity Boys Basketball Team. Whereas, the 2019 South Central Boys Varsity Basketball Team played basketball with remarkable success and dignity as representatives of Pitt County and the state of North Carolina. And whereas, the 2019 South Central Boys Varsity Basketball Team sealed their first-ever state championship by beating West Charlotte 76 to 46 in the 4A State Championship. Whereas, the players, coaches, and families of the 2019 South Central Boys Varsity Basketball Team deserved congratulations for their time, effort, and resources they committed to, quote, "going all the way" in winning the 4A State Boys Basketball Championship. The 2019 South Central Boys Varsity Basketball Team players, and help me, coaches and other players, some of the names, Shaquem Phillips, Trayvon Ward, Sidney Williams, Isaiah Mills, Jazir Baker, Shaquon Jones, Joseph Thompson, Philip Chin, Jordan McMillan, Raquan Van, Larry Vastor, Jeremy Lewis, Dayron Sharp, Havante Hutcherson, and Terrick Hill. Did I do pretty good on those, or?
He's a transplant, but he's getting better.
Okay. The, moving on, the 2019 South Central Boys Varsity Basketball Staff members, Christopher Cherry, head coach, Leyland Jones, assistant coach, Joey Gaddy, assistant coach, Tim Elliott, assistant coach, James Hillard, assistant coach, Felix Harris, assistant coach, DeMica-
Damarica.
Damarica.
Like America.
Sharp, manager, Michaela Chance, manager, Erin Jones, manager, Haley Sear-
Hallie Sear.
Hallie Sear, athletic trainer, and Miles White, special assistant. Am I missing somebody?
No.
Okay. Now therefore, be resolved, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize the outstanding achievements of the 2019 South Central Boys Varsity Basketball Team and congratulates the players, coaches, and families for bringing the 4A State Boys Basketball Championship to Pitt County, North Carolina. Adopted this 20th day of May, 2019, by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, signed by our Chair Beth B. Ward and our Clerk Kimberly W. Hines. Ms. Ward?
Okay. Head coach, maybe? How are you? Thank you so much, and we just are really proud, honestly, and these young people just presented themselves beautifully throughout this whole process, here in the county, regionals, all of it, so we're proud.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have certificates for each of the players, and Madam Chair, if you'd like me just to, I'll read them and you can present them?
Okie doke.
Okay, I'll read the first one. Certificate of appreciation is awarded to Shaquem Phillips for participating as a player in the 2019 4A State Boys Basketball Championship, presented by the Board of County Commissioners, May 20th.
And where are you? Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Trayvon Ward.
Okay.
Good, not here. Okay. Isaiah Mills.
Of course, I got on that side. Congratulations.
Jazir Baker.
Here we go. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Shaquon Jones. Not here.
Again.
Joseph Thompson.
Congratulations, Joseph. Thank you.
Philip Chin.
Congratulations, Philip. Thank you very much.
Jordan McMillan.
Okay.
Raquan Van. Raquan?
Yeah, Raquan. Is that you? Oh, okay, he's not here, so I just thought you might finally get one.
Larry Lassiter?
Larry Lassiter. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Jeremy Lewis. Dayron Sharp. Havante Hutcherson.
There he is, and you're almost, when you get him to that, thank you. Congratulations.
Terrick Hill.
Terrick.
Okay, to the coaches, to the head coach, Christopher Cherry.
Congratulations, thank you.
Assistant coach Leyland Jones.
Congratulations, thank you.
Joey Gaddy.
Congratulations, thank you very much.
Tim Elliott.
Here he comes.
Congratulations, thank you.
James Hilliard.
Congratulations, thank you very much.
Felix Harris. Damarica Sharp.
Congratulations, Damarica, thank you.
Erin Jones, these two are managers.
She's not here.
Michaela Chance, manager.
Congratulations, thank you very much.
Haley Sear, athletic trainer.
Not here either. You won't take that.
And Miles White, special assistant.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
All right.
Is that it?
Yes.
Again, thank you, and I'm very proud, not just because of what you brought to Pitt County, but I'm a Faribault native, so, yay. Go Red Devils, you don't even know what they are. Congratulations, thank you so much. That got us?
Yep.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
They're walking right out.
Yeah.
Should we use point guard on your team?
Oh, you kidding me? I was a dead cheerleader. Point guard.
They sold out Menjies twice the day of the championship.
They had to, and then everybody came back for it. Incredible.
Our town sold out that place, I don't know.
It has been sold out twice in one day.
Okay. Our next item of business is we're going back up to our public hearings, and James wrote.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have one public hearing concerning a conditional use permit tonight. For the newer members, this is not uncommon where we have conditional use permits for residential child daycare centers. These are, as the name pretty much explains, is a childcare center within a residential unit. As described by state law, it is a house or residence in which between three and eight children are kept in there, so that's kind of the range. It's not a full-blown commercial daycare, it is a residential daycare facility. So with that, as a reminder, with any of these conditional use permits, these are handled through quasi-judicial procedures, and there's a lot of different guidelines we go through. Commissioner Perkins-Williams just went to training the other week on quasi-judicial procedures, she now has a nice handbook with her, so if any of you need a brush-up course, we've got that available as well, but for tonight. Purpose of the hearing is to establish the facts, again, hearsay typically not allowed. Witnesses will be under oath, and we're here to establish evidence for the particular case. There'll be a detailed record of the proceedings here. No ex parte communication, that means you can't be talking with other parties prior to this, and also, written findings of fact are required. Any disapproval have to be fully vetted and has to be in writing, and any appeals go straight to the Superior Court. So with that, anyone wishing to speak tonight should be, come up, should come up now and be sworn in by the clerk.
Okay, if you're coming forward and wish to speak on this, or even think you might speak on it, you still have to be sworn in.
Please, where to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do. And again, this is a conditional use permit for residential daycare facility, and this property is located in Crystal Acres subdivision. I'll show you a vicinity map in just a second. South Old River Road, and in this particular case, Mrs. Little is looking at operating the facility between 8:00 AM and 11:00 PM. Here on the map, as you can tell, this is within a residential subdivision, several homes, Old River Road right off the corner here, this is leading into the subdivision. As you probably noticed in your agenda package, this actual notification went out to some 50 households because it is in a relatively dense area within a subdivision. As far as the land use plan, true to form here, this is rural residential, and as you can see, the majority of the uses right around this particular site are used for residential. There is a church right on the corner of Old River Road and Quartz Drive, and just off to the rear of here is a sand mine that's been used by the Department of Transportation, that being the little dark corner here right off the edge of the map. With any of these residential daycare facilities, there are already some prescribed conditions that are listed in our zoning ordinance. The first is security fencing for any of the play areas, there has to be at least a six-foot-high fence surrounding those areas. Location only comes into play when the facility is on a site larger than three acres, does not apply here. Hours of operation, we don't allow these facilities to operate 24 hours, so in this case, you've already seen the hours of operations that are proposed are between 8:00 A and 11:00 So as we typically do with any of these conditional use permits, there are four criteria that we consider, and what you'll hear from us is part of our staff report on each one of these criterion. We try to give what we feel like is our best example to go along with any of the criteria that we'll be discussing. For example, the first one, will this particular land use materially endanger the public health or safety? We believe that it will not, because it is within a residential area, and it will not materially danger public health and safety there. Will it substantially injure the value of adjoining or budding properties? We feel like it will not. It is within a residential structure and should not damage any of the adjacent property values. Is it in harmony with the area? We feel like it is, again, it's within a residential structure, within a residential development, and we feel like it is consistent with the surrounding land uses. Is it in conformity with our land use plan? It is, as well as the other plans that have been adopted by the Commissioners, and again, staff believe that it is. So with that, Madam Chair, we have two motions for your consideration. The first one is to acknowledge that the conditional use permit application is complete and complies with all the applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance, and secondly, those conditions that we've already prescribed, along with one additional one, and that being the hours of operation between 8:00 A and 11:00 P. And Madam Chair, just for your information, Mrs. Little is here, she did not sign up to speak, but she is available if you have any questions after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. I declare the public hearing open, but you had to have been sworn in, right?
Right, no one signed up.
Okay, so no one signed up, and there was no one sworn in, so I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we'll move forward with considering both areas. I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may pose a question, so zoning ordinance attached to the premises, not the person, this is a leased premises, would it be prudent to include a condition, seeing as how it is a leased premises, as soon as this tenant is no longer on site, that, that the zoning would be terminated pursuant to that?
In this case, we're actually using, we're issuing this conditional use permit to this particular person.
To the person, okay.
Okay. And also, getting into the weeds a little bit, there are requirements at the state level, so this is step one, and Mrs. Little still proceeds on forward.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Huggins? Ready for the motion? Yes, ma'am. I move that, the first motion. Do we do both at one time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I make a motion that we move with the two motions. Okay, do you accept that, Chris, as your second? Okay, all right, the motion has been made that we approve the two motions as presented. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay.
Thank you.
Any opposition, raise your hand, please. Okie doke, that's it. Okay, and we have a road name. Eli Johnson, if you'll come forward, please.
Hello, good evening. I'm Eli, and I'm here to talk about the road naming addition for service road naming along the 265 for bypass that's being constructed. As you may recall, come back before, the North Carolina Department of Transportation, through its contractor, Barnhill, construction is in the process of designing construction of NC 11 Southwest Bypass. So construction of the bypass is accompanied by the construction of service roads, which will be maintained by NCDOT. Pitt County must name the 13 service roads that will be constructed. As each road nears completion, suggested road names are provided, and a public hearing will be held for each road. This is a map of the area that shows what we're talking about now along the bypass, it's just west of Winnebago and southwest of Greenville. Further details, it's really along Four Lines Road, just west of the bypass interchange. So the property owners have been notified along this portion, given the opportunity to submit a recommendation for the name of the road, and only the road names that meet the requirements for the addressing ordinance, like non-duplication naming, are presented for consideration. So notified, we sent notification in the public hearing to the emergency service providers and affected property owners for review and comment on the following two names. We have Pittman Farm Road and Trump Lane. This is another detail of the map of the property owners that were affected. Reach one, you had Worthington Farms, David Rushing, Johnny Pittman, and the red dotted line is the, is the actual service road. This shows about the near completion, this was taken last week, so that the road's been paved, access has been there, there's two homes you can see further on the right that will be affected by this. I'm sorry, I'll only show you one thing, and so looking forward is the interchange that's with the bridge, that's where the bypass is going to be coming. This is looking west along Four Lines. This is the actual intersection. This is coming from the road, I'm looking down, you can see the fencing that they've already put in, DOT, so they're getting really close to put up the signage, the stop signs and some other, and some markings. This is the very end of it, where there's a turnaround, so that you just come back out of the path. So the Board of County Commissioners may consider one of the names provided, or a suitable name following the public hearing, Pittman Farm Road or Trump Lane.
Okay. The motion we take.
And so our recommendation is after holding the public hearing, you name the newly constructed service road located west of the interchange of Four Lines Road and the Southwest Bypass.
Okay, so we don't need to do a public hearing, do we? On this, you all have already done.
Ma'am?
Well, yes, there is, I'm sorry, yes, there is a public hearing.
Okay, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is anyone who would like to speak?
Madam Chair, we have one person signed up, Patricia Pittman, if she'll come forward.
Okay, Ms. Pittman?
I live there on 1491 Four Lines Road, but my address will change when the service road is named, and I live on there, and my daughter lives behind me, we're the only two people that's going to be on that service road, and I'd like to have it named Pittman Farms Road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and I'll entertain a motion.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make the motion that we name it Pittman Farm Road and on the Pittman Farm.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it passes. You will now have a new address. Congratulations. Okie dokie, we're now, oh, how do you say his last name? Mr. McGinn? Geng? Okay, we'll hear from the Green Lamp.
I will not.
Community Action.
I'm glad she was here to speak.
Gentlemen, if you'll come forward, please.
That's what I said.
Where are we now?
I want to prove the name there.
We're number five under presentation. Yes, sir. If you'll identify yourself and make your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Maganga. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Green Lamp. We are based in Keystone, that's where the main office is, but we currently serve 11 counties in eastern North Carolina. Just a brief history of Green Lamp, the organization was founded and chartered in 1965, and like indicated earlier, we serve in 11 counties, including Pitt. Community action agencies across the US, they serve over 1,000 counties, and they've been very instrumental in helping low-income families attain self-sufficiency. Currently, Green Lamp has approximately eight, nine programs that assist families and individuals from, and children from ages- from, children from ages 12 months to elders, you know, above 24. And those are in various categories. The agency is currently governed by a 20-member tripartite board, which has one-third public members and one-third from the private sector, and the other third from the low-income community. Madam Chair, let me go ahead and say thank you so much to the commission for approving May as the Community Action Month. We truly appreciate that. I have personally been involved with Greenlamp for just over two years. One of the things that I've discovered is that there are so many stories that go untold, and as a result, it becomes business as usual. So briefly, let me just explain that when my family and I moved to the United States in 2001, I had the opportunity of being given the chance to go to school through the Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act, which is one of the programs that Greenlamp currently has. If it wasn't for that, I probably would not have had the chance that I currently, you know, have enjoyed. Through that gave me a stepping stone, you know, to go ahead, do my associate, do my bachelor's, and do my MBA when we moved here to eastern North Carolina. There are numerous other stories that I've come to, you know, know since I joined Greenlamp. And I just want to once again say thank you for recognizing May. I'm hoping that through this, we'll be able to create more awareness to the public, especially in Pitt, where we currently serve over 150 individuals and their families through the Community Service Block grant. Finally, just want to say thank you once again for giving us the opportunity to come and speak about Greenlamp Community Action. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
And next, we have our public addresses to the board, and would you read the ones that have signed up, please?
Yes, we have three people signed up. Kylie and Dibble will come forward and tell us who you're with and your address. And if the clerk will read our statement on public addresses. And the clerk for attorney, I'm sorry.
Yes, Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. I'll keep your time at three minutes per speaker, and before you speak, if you'll state your name and address for the...
Is it five minutes for an organization?
If you're speaking for multiple people, then yes.
Okay.
Just let us know.
Okay.
If you'll move the mic down a little bit, or move over one of them, yes.
Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of Parents for Public Schools of Pitt County, and there are several of them in the audience. So, good evening, my name is Kyliene Dibble, and I'm the Executive Director of Parents for Public Schools of Pitt County. I want to begin this evening by saying thank you for all you do to make Pitt County such a wonderful, thriving place to live. I do not envy your positions, as I know you have incredibly hard decisions to make, particularly this time of year, as you make decisions about the budget that so personally affect individuals in our county. I'm aware that there is one pie, and it can only be cut into so many slices. And I know that each of you gives careful consideration and thought to how those slices are divided. I come to you tonight on behalf of parents in Pitt County. Each year, we conduct a series of community conversations with parents and community members that allow us to gather feedback about Pitt County schools. Every group is asked the same questions: what's going well, and what are the greatest needs in Pitt County schools? Almost without fail, teachers come up in both categories. Parents are pleased with teachers in Pitt County and feel that they truly care about their children's academic and emotional success. However, they also want to see teachers better supported. They ask that teachers be paid better, that we have more teacher assistance, and we have better access to classroom supplies. As we look at a county that is clearly growing and thriving, we also look at increasing class sizes. This year alone, my own fourth-grade daughter has gone from a class of 23 to one of 28 due to new families moving to the area. As we look at class size requirements that will go into effect in our future, I have to wonder how there will be enough teachers to meet the demand for smaller class sizes. I can't help but think that if a brand-new teacher were offered a position in Pitt County, and the same position was offered in a nearby county with a slightly higher supplement, we might lose a well-qualified teacher who might have new leadership, even become a principal, and potentially grow Pitt County overall. Not only are we losing teachers to other counties, we only get 15% of ECU graduating teachers, but lack of competitive K is causing us to lose teachers to the profession in general. Today, I spoke with a college student who was an education major and changed her major. When I asked her why, she said completely uprooting my life for a new degree was not easy. But until we begin valuing teachers by giving them appropriate resources and necessary supplies, and the support they need, monetary and otherwise, teachers will continue to leave the profession, and college students will continue to choose other majors. I also come to you tonight wearing a couple of other hats, one as a parent myself, and one as an adjunct instructor in the School of Social Work at ECU. I'm sure you can all imagine that as a wintergreen parent, the past week was difficult, as we lost a beloved teacher. As a parent of two daughters who have connected with this teacher, I wondered what their grief needs would be, and I worried about teachers who would have to put their own grief aside. But I felt so encouraged, sorry, to the heightened awareness, extra counselors, extra social workers who were in that school. And I can't help but wonder what needs were neglected in other schools, as those counselors and social workers focused on grief counseling last week. And I have to believe, if we had more counselors and more social workers, then they would all be better able to address the everyday needs of their demanding jobs, along with this unexpected need. As a social work instructor, I teach a class in the spring made up of students who spend 32 hours a week completing an internship. I work with the school's social work interns. Every week for two hours, they talk to me about the demands of being a school social worker. They're shocked at how much they have to focus on attendance and educating parents about attendance, while also dealing with things like food insecurity, or children with parents who are incarcerated. Their other theme is that often arises is how surprised they are to find that one social worker covers several schools, when there's more than enough needs for that one social worker to be full-time at one school. We often have discussions about the fact that if mental health and more support services were increased in our schools, we as a society might have a better chance of breaking some of the cycles that are so prominent in terms of poverty, incarceration, food security, and more. I close again this evening by saying thank you. I've worked with families in many arenas, and I know that you have other constituents asking for additional funding for their very valuable budgets. And yet, I continue to believe that education is our common denominator, and if we start by providing a better salary through supplements to well-qualified teachers, and we increase the mental health and support services offered to our students by hiring more counselors, social workers, and school psychiatrists, the systems theory will go into effect, and every other system in our community will be positively affected because of the emphasis placed on providing additional educational funding. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Wow, that was right on the...
Thank you. Got a good time.
Next, we have Lauren Piner.
And I'm also representing an organization, Pitt County Association of Educators. Good evening, my name is Lauren Piner, and I'm currently finishing up my eighth year as a social studies teacher at South Central High School, where I teach world history, as well as an elective on Holocaust and genocide studies. I'm president of the Pitt County Association of Educators, the legislative advocate for the North Carolina Council on the Social Studies, as well as an advisory board member for Red for Ed NC. I'm fortunate to be in leadership positions across my school, our county, and our state, and I'm fortunate enough that I'm allowed to speak with hundreds, if not thousands, of educators each year. Before I begin, I want to make it known that I understand there's only so much money to go around. All of our sheriffs deserve more pay, everyone deserves more resources. Your jobs are tough, and I wish more people understood the hard decisions that public servants must make in order to maintain our society. As someone who suffered veiled threats for my support for the May 1st teacher rally, I get it. The North Carolina General Assembly has consistently tried to dismantle public education in our state through various means since I began teaching in 2011, and we're beginning to see the effects. Enrollment and teacher preparation programs is down over 30% across the University of North Carolina system. We like school psychologists, social workers, nurses, and basic resources to simply do our jobs. However, the blame for these shortcomings does not lie with local education associations and county boards, it lies with the members of the General Assembly, who have continued to pass unfunded mandates that pass the financial burden onto county budgets and local systems of government. No county commissioner or superintendent should ever have to decide between funding school security upgrades or funding classroom teacher positions. Both are essential to the safety and success of our students. Both are costly, and I'm pretty certain that no one has ever been excited about a tax increase in the history of our world, but I would like to frame the issue of increased taxes not as a financial hardship, but as investment into our community, as well as our future. My ask for you today is to fully fund the budget requests from Pitt County schools, specifically in regards to the teacher supplements. When reviewing my files, I realized I stood in the same spot on June 9th, 2015, and spoke about the importance of increasing teacher salary supplements, which then was the first time in 12 years, as well as providing supplements for beginning teachers, who had had those supplements taken away due to the recession in 2008. Here again with the same message. Along with the numerous benefits associated with having the largest producer of teachers in our backyard, East Carolina University, it also means we are subject to a very transient community and workforce. I see it every year. Teachers are employed in Pitt County schools for a few years, they receive their full license, and then the siren song of Wake, Mecklenburg, Orange, and Durham Counties calls. More opportunities, more things to do, and as a bonus, higher supplements. I understand these places have higher cost of living and a much higher tax base, but a supplement increase could be a deciding factor in swaying teachers to stay, embed themselves in our community, and become the seasoned mentors our new teachers need. Every student in our public schools deserves to have a highly qualified veteran teacher in their classroom, and those teachers deserve to be well-respected as the professionals they are, and given the resources, both human and educational, that are necessary to educate all of our children. Even those who are veteran teachers and members of our community, I personally know many people who have chosen to drive across the border into Wilton, Craven, and Edgecombe Counties, all who have higher supplements than we do here in Pitt. Here in Pitt, it's 5 and 1/4% for veteran teachers. For beginning teachers, it's 3 and 1/2%. Pitt County is the crown jewel of eastern North Carolina for numerous reasons. We should not have a problem recruiting and retaining teachers. Just today, I looked, and we currently have 48 certified positions listed on the Pitt County Schools website. I truly fear what will happen in the next few years when our veteran teachers continue to retire, teachers continue to leave the profession, and we're left in the lurch to try and recruit teachers and build enough classrooms to meet the North Carolina General Assembly Class Size Bill, which we are currently exempt from. So with this, I implore you to fully fund the budget requests from Pitt County schools, including the requested scaffold for teacher supplement increases, and I thank those of you who have verbally given your support earlier this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
My name is Brenda Brown, and I live at 1861 State and Mills Road, that's Bethel, North Carolina. And we're still having problems with the train coming and parking 4:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, and leaving the engine running, two engines, running behind somebody's house when you're trying to sleep. And then also, they have two trains that they keep parked over there on the weekend. If they're not running, they have the engines over there just running loud enough. I can hear that too in the middle of the night. We can't sleep, we don't know what's going on, and what can be done so we can get some relief and get some sleep? And those chemicals that are coming out of the engines, it's beginning to be a problem too. I actually saw it today when I was sitting on the porch when it was parked behind the house. You could see the black stuff coming from the engine. That's hazardous to me. That can affect my health, as well as my mother, and she's already sick, because she's there with me now. So what can be done to resolve this problem that we're having with this train? We can't get any sleep, we can't get no rest. Three nights in a row, 4:30 in the morning, 6 o'clock in the morning, 6 o'clock in the morning, and stayed there 12 hours without cutting off. I need some sleep, we need rest. You're already sick, and then you can't get no rest. What are we supposed to do out in the country? Because the station was here in Greenville, they brought the train station out there to us. I've been out there 40 years, the last five years has been restless. What do we do in a situation like that? I mean, what can be done if they're not responding to the county commissioners? I guess nobody, I mean...
Well, we don't usually respond to public responses. We're not being impolite and not... We're listening very closely to what you have to say. And our attorney, I know, has been dealing with this, and has been working with your neighbors and community, and I'm sure we will look into this, because I think we kind of thought things were better, but apparently they're not. But we're certainly hearing what you're saying. We don't have an answer tonight, but we will, we will talk about it.
They've been working on it for a while now, and it's just... If I could just get some peace and quiet sometimes. If they're going to park behind the house, just cut the train off. It's going to cost them more to start it back up, but, you know, what about my health? And when I did call Mr. Dillard, or whatever his name is, when I called him the first time, he called me back, and I asked him, was those chemicals on that train dangerous? And he said, no.
Of course he didn't.
Some kind of motoring something, I don't know, but I looked it up on the internet, and ate the skin off this man, and a train has derailed on that same track further towards Bethel.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming. Your time is up for public, but that's fine. Thank you very much.
So we have signed up, Madam Chair. Is there somebody else in the audience?
Okay, our next, our items for report. And we have Sam Crean. Sam, if you'll come forward. Hey, Sam, how are you?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, commissioners. It's good to be with you all tonight. I'm here to bring the April collection report for 2019. Year-to-date, as of April 30th, the combined collection rate for real and personal property is 98.82%. For the same time period last year, it was 98.7%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes, using all the necessary remedies made available to us by the North Carolina general statutes. My recommendation is that you accept the collection report as presented.
Do I have a motion? Okay, a second? Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand to accept the report. Thank you.
Thank you, y'all have a good night.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, board of commissioners. I present to you the monthly financial reports ending on April 30th. This is our 10th month, so we are 88.3% through the fiscal year. At the end of April, our revenues were collected at 82.2%, and our expenses were spent at 80.3%. Both numbers are slightly lower than last year due to some movement of some large reserves that we had into the general fund. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions, comments? We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you very much, Brian. Okay, and Bill Hopper?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have...
He's still here. This is our new director.
Yes, new PGV, Pitt Greenville Airport Director.
Yes.
And I'll...
Another job.
Welcome to the podium.
One month, two months?
Two months. Two months.
Two months. And still here. Good. Welcome.
Been here for a while. Thank you very much. Very much appreciate it. Are, were we able to get it on the...
Yes, if our PIO office could pull up the PowerPoint for him, please.
We've, we're having trouble with this. I don't know whether we're having trouble with that or not.
And make these connections, Scott.
Leave me a bit more.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, folks, sorry, sorry about the little delay there, but I just want to, first of all, um, say thank you very much for, for giving me this opportunity to speak about Pitt Greenville Airport. Uh, just, I just started this, as Scott had said, just a couple of months ago. Uh, on February twenty-eighth was my first day. I moved here from Elmira, New York, and it was very cold and snowy up there, so I'm actually, you know, enjoying this heat. And, uh, prior to that, I, I spent many years in New England. I was there for twenty-two years, so I have well over, uh, about thirty-five years of experience in airport management, and I'm very excited to be here. I saw a lot of great opportunities here at Pitt Greenville Airport. Uh, this is a growing community. The one thing that I, I noticed when, uh, you know, when, when I was looking into this position is that, uh, that there's some very, very rapid growth going on in, in this community, and, uh, we're, uh, right now, we have about five hundred passengers a day that are going to Raleigh-Durham, and I'd like to get a few of those passengers, and, and even if I could just get a hundred of those passengers, we'd be, we'd be very successful, so, but that's part of what we'll be trying to do. Uh, first of all, I'll just start out, we are rebranding. Um, you'll notice that we had the, the green spaceship, I guess, that had been here for many years, and, uh, we're now moving on to, uh, the, the PGV with the, with the airplane in it, and, uh, we're gonna try to get that brand out everywhere. Our, our plan is, is that by, uh, the end of, of next fiscal year, in July of two thousand twenty, uh, that we'll have that, pretty much have the old brand gone and the new brand in. Uh, it's everywhere. The old brand is even etched into, into the bricks in the side of our building, so, uh, we've got that brand everywhere, and so we're gonna be working hard to, to get our new brand out there, and we'll also be working hard to, to get the word out on Pitt Greenville Airport. Uh, kind of an overview of what I, I plan to do today is, I'll go over some facts and statistics. Uh, we'll talk about air service development. I think that that's, uh, something that's very near and dear to, to everybody around here, uh, for the, the further growth of the airport. Uh, we'll talk about some other development, and also community engagement. My plans, I've, I've always been very engaged in the community in, in my career with airport management, and I, uh, look to continue that here in North Carolina. Uh, facts and statistics, uh, we have a staff of nineteen full-time people, two part-time. Uh, we are a very unique airport in that we provide ground services. Uh, most airports do not fuel planes, do not park planes. Uh, we do that, and it's, it's, uh, in some ways, it's, uh, uh, you know, it, it, it means a little bit more work, but it also means we have more control in, in how we, uh, how we're able to serve our customers. And so that's something that, that, uh, I'm, I'm very excited about it. This is the first airport I've been at where, uh, where we've had that kind of control, and I'm very, uh, very excited about it. Uh, our passengers are over a hundred thousand, and that's something that I would look to grow. Uh, you know, you look at, uh, airports around us, uh, that, that, you know, like, uh, Jacksonville or Albert Ellis, uh, you know, has, I believe, over two hundred thousand, and I believe that, uh, you also have that many as well at, uh, New Bern. Um, our operations are at fourteen thousand a year. Uh, each operation is a takeoff or landing, and, uh, we also have an operating budget of three point four million. The only airline we have is American Airlines, and I'm gonna touch a little bit more on that a little later. Uh, one thing that people don't realize is we have the most based aircraft really in the area, with the exception of Wilmington and, and Raleigh-Durham, with seventy-one, which is, is very significant, especially when you consider the number of corporate aircraft that we have based here, and we have an economic impact of two hundred and eighty million dollars. Um, I do have, uh, copies of the state's economic impact. For anybody that would like it, I'd be happy to hand it out. Um, or if you want to get ahold of me, I'd be happy to, to provide it to you as well. But, uh, the, the economic impact of, of aviation on the local communities is, is very significant. Uh, it, it, it is, uh, you know, a, a, you know, it is one item that a number of companies, when they're locating, uh, into a community that they want, is, is, is good aviation Um, our air service development, uh, our ideal candidates, I'll just, first of all, start out, we'd like to get another hub. You know, we have Charlotte, uh, you know, Charlotte is, is a great hub. It's, uh, you know, they, through, uh, American Airlines, uh, you can pretty much fly just, you know, anywhere, just about anywhere on Americans Network. However, there are some holes that are left over there. Uh, we have been talking with one particular airline, not at Liberty, just because we're still negotiating and, and trying to line up service, but, uh, we, we've been having some, some very good discussions with one particular airline that would provide a hub on the east coast, and, uh, our hopes are that, uh, you know, that, that maybe in another year or so, we'll be able to, uh, get some success there. Something that you have to keep in mind is, is air service is not done quickly. Um, the, this is relationship building. This is, 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 you know, pitching your case, talking about that, uh, the things that maybe, you know, an airline doesn't see. For instance, uh, you know, um, the number of people maybe that go to Washington DC from here, uh, isn't truly reflected, because a lot of those people probably jump in a car and drive there. And so, you know, these are the types of things that we need to try to, uh, you know, try, try to put a number on and, and, and try and, you know, and talk with the airlines about that, about people that would actually jump on a plane instead of jumping on a car if they had a direct flight. And that's just one example. Um, another ideal candidate that I can see, you know, which is probably a little bit lower on the list, but, uh, is, is starting to get some strength in the industry itself for, or what they call lessened daily service, uh, with direct flights to Florida. There's a, a number of, uh, of, of, you know, airlines that are doing this, and, uh, they've been seeing a lot of success, and they provide a great service to, to their communities. Um, I had put on there the Small Community Air Service Development Program Grant. Uh, this is a grant that is offered by the United States Department of Transportation. Uh, they just announced it. Uh, there, we, we did apply, I believe, back in two thousand fifteen, and, uh, we, we did not have success in getting it. Uh, one of the big differences about the application we'd like to make this time as opposed to last time is that we have an airline that, that is, is showing a lot of interest in signing a letter of support. Uh, that is very important when it comes to, to applying for these grants. The, the, uh, what, with the, when the Department of Transportation awards these grants, there's a couple of things they'd like to see, and number one is that there is interest from airlines, and so, uh, that, that would be very paramount to get that letter of support. Another thing is community support. Um, these grants are, uh, they, we're probably looking around a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, grant that we'd be applying for. There's not say how much that we'd actually be able to get. However, they do want some, some community, uh, you know, that, the community to, to, to provide a little bit of support as well. So we will be going out, reaching out to various business leaders, to, to the, the county, city, um, just looking for, for various support in that area. And, uh, that application does have to be in by July fifteenth. Uh, we'll be providing more information on that. Uh, one of the nice things about once that application goes in is it becomes public information, I can start kind of alluding to what airline we're talking to a little bit without actually giving the name. Other airport development, uh, one thing that we do have a lot of interest in is hangars. We have a, a, a list of twelve aircraft owners that, that would like to, uh, you know, that, that have, have said that they would, uh, like to have a hangar if, if we ever had it developed, so we'll be looking into different, uh, various ways of, of being able to make that happen. Uh, the state, uh, did just come up with, uh, uh, some money that they're, they're right now kind of going through the process of getting approval on. Uh, it's, uh, House Bill two oh six, and it comes from rental car, uh, revenues, and, uh, the, the formula that they put into it, Pitt Greenville would, would be able to get approximately around a million dollars a year, and it'd be something where we can accumulate it. Uh, and also, they said that, you know, let's hear what you, what your proposals are. They, you know, that DOT is open to, you know, maybe we have a little bit more here or there that we might be able to work with you on, so, uh, we've been getting a lot of, uh, interest from the DOT on that, and so we'll continue to talk with them on it. Um, and of course, we do have some land. I mean, there's some non-aeronautical land that we have, uh, to the north of the air, airport, about ninety acres, uh, that we would very much, uh, like to see if we could get tenants for as well. And last is the community engagement. Uh, we've been having events lately. We had, uh, one of them, of course, is Free to Be Me. Uh, it's an event that the airport has, uh, had located at it for a, a few years now. Uh, this is a great event. It's the children's hospital, uh, where they, they come out. Uh, it's, it's a day on, on a Saturday. Uh, we had, we had five fixed wing pilots and one helicopter pilot offer rides to these children and their families, and they go out, and they get to just be a kid for a day and, and just, you know, kind of, uh, let their worries, uh, go off to the side and go out and just have some fun in airplanes, and, uh, we had bounce houses and, and a number of other things, and it was a fantastic event, and I look forward to hosting those in, in upcoming years as well. Uh, we also have, I don't know if people are aware, but there's, there's a shortage of pilots and aviation, uh, mechanics, uh, in the, in the industry, and that shortage is, is actually getting worse and worse. Um, there's a number of pilots that are, that are getting ready to retire, uh, and it's also, it's just the, the, you know, the, uh, wanting to get up to learn to fly is just getting very expensive. Uh, it's getting cost prohibitive, and so they're, they're, you know, and, and there aren't a lot of schools out there that'll offer it. Some of these smaller colleges, like Elizabeth, uh, Elizabeth City State University, are starting to develop these programs, and there's also some, some local, uh, uh, community colleges that have done this as well, and, uh, it, so, uh, Elizabeth City, uh, is going around to different airports in the area. They have two aircraft that they own, and they, they fly them in. They have a, a, what they call a STEM trailer, a science technology, uh, engineering and math, uh, trailer, uh, where they have different types of, of games and stuff in there, and, uh, they, they try to recruit students to come out there, and, uh, they, it was a wonderful event. Uh, we're probably gonna be doing it again in six months. I look forward to doing it again. And if people have ideas for other events, let me know. I mean, we would love, what we want to do is we want to get people out to the airport, get people excited about the airport, and, and start hosting some of these things. We're also looking into community outreach. Uh, if you look in the picture there, we had a booth at the, uh, last Friday, at the, uh, the Chamber, um, Business Expo. Uh, we had a lot of interest. We, uh, got to know a lot of our neighbors, and so this is something where we want to make sure that people are very much aware of, is that this county does have an airport. It's an airport, uh, that has a lot of potential. Uh, we're, we're looking to grow that airport, and we are very much a part of the business community, and, and we like to make sure that that is known. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Any comments? Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation. Again, welcome to Pitt County.
Thank you. Thank you. Very much enjoyed being here, and thank you for allowing me the time to present.
Thank you. Okay, and manager's report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things. Next meeting date's June third. It'll be your next regular meeting, first meeting of the month of June at nine AM. Then the following day on Tuesday, June the fourth, is the, um, public hearing on the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget, and then your regular meeting for the third Monday in the month of June, June seventeenth at six PM. Have two other things I wanted to report real quickly, if I could. One involves the William Pitt painting that hangs in the Pitt County Courthouse. Um, the county's been contacted by the Greenville Museum of Art about loaning the painting to the Greenville, Greenville Museum of Art for an exhibit they're calling Then and Now. It says the exhibit, this exhibition addresses the history and contemporary landscapes of Greenville, and it says one whole gallery will include historical photos, documents, and artifacts with information about Greenville and Pitt County. And they're saying this will, exhibition will be from June twenty-first through October fifth of two thousand nineteen, and they're basically saying the painting would be insured by their wall-to-wall fine arts insurance, which includes transit to and from the, to and from the museum. Uh, we've talked to the courthouse officials, particularly, um, Judge Blunt, senior resident Superior Court Judge, and he had no problem with the, the loaning of it. The county attorney I have talked about, um, I think the Greenville Museum, Greenville Museum of Art has a loan document, loaner document that we would, um, review in fashion to our needs, and, um, it's recommended to recommend, to loan this to the Museum of Art. And this is the painting that hangs in the lobby on the first floor in the, it's what they call the courthouse alley. It's right outside the register of deeds, um, office, large painting, I think William Pitt is in red, maybe. If the board is in agreement to that, we can, um, make that happen.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, ma'am.
So move. So move. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay? Thank you.
And one other item, as I had alluded to in the, um, budget workshop meeting at four o'clock regarding body cameras for the sheriff's office, if Chief General will come up, we just wanted to, um, introduce the concept of, of seeking a grant, and then they're gonna come back with a formal proposal on June the third.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I come on behalf of Sheriff Dance to, um, let you know, after the initial budget workshop, uh, a grant opportunity was identified through the Bureau of Justice Assistance. Uh, it's a maximum of five hundred thousand dollars, and it would require a fifty, uh, percent match, uh, to move forward for that. And, um, from now until the June the third date of your next meeting, uh, we will be finishing that grant application and presenting it at that time to, uh, help, uh, take care of the body cameras for the sheriff's office.
We initially thought we would be able to have everything ready tonight for board action, but the deeper we looked into it, we feel like we needed to flesh some of the documents out, the narrative and the budget and so forth, before we brought it to you for formal action, but also wanted, before having the public hearing on the budget, wanted you to know that the sheriff's office is being proactive and are pursuing the grant opportunities, as you had suggested. No guarantee that they will be funded, but this is an opportunity they're trying to seek.
It would be an award date in October, uh, but we feel like we have time to get this together for June third, Melwood County, uh, management, and we're all moving together on this.
Right. We had the sheriff, the three chiefs, their IT director, their grant writer, the county's management team, myself, the county attorney, Brian Barnett and Mike Taylor met, we all met as a group to discuss all the, whether policies or data storage, or the RFP, or piggybacking, or just all the different elements of it, the grant itself, trying to get our hands around it, and try to come up with a plan to, to push this forward. And again, this is a, the Bureau of Justice Assistance, this would be a grant opportunity that's nationwide. It's, it's not a very large pot of money, so we need to be hopeful and expect, expectant and prayerful that we will land this grant.
If they obtain the grant, is the money, uh, set aside for the matching?
That would be, um, what we would come back to you. We're not totally certain exactly how much that match will be at this point in time, but we'll come back to you at June the third with what that will be, and, um, it's a three-year grant, so technically, I mean theoretically, it's a five hundred thousand dollar grant. It was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar match. It'd be two hundred and fifty thousand over three years, so even in that case scenario, you're looking at eighty-two, eighty-three thousand dollars per year, which is more doable than five hundred and forty-four thousand in one year.
Okay. And the other thing that maybe when you come back on June the third, the, what else might be involved as far as the body cameras and the storage and any additional personnel and that sort of thing? Because we haven't ever really talked about that as a commission. We haven't heard that.
That'll be spelled out in the grant application.
Okay. That's good.
It'll take care of all of that. Now...
I just wanted to let them kind of know that we'd be hearing that.
And in terms of that concern of the personnel of, you know, we did, I did allude that I felt like it would take somebody in-house to deal with the redaction of images and, and if you had a court order to release a, um, uh, film segment, who was gonna do that? The sheriff has identified somebody within the sheriff's office that they're gonna task with that responsibility.
And that'll be in, in your presentation.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
One question. I know, um, we originally said that our half was gonna come from the federal inmate revenue. Is that still true?
Well, that would be part of what we bring back on the third, and hopefully we will know, maybe we will, maybe we won't, whether the Fed bed renegotiated daily amount going from seventy-eight dollars to...
I just want to notate, the public hearing meeting, that's a change in time of 7:00 instead of our usual meeting time at 6:00 o'clock. Is that right?
Correct. We traditionally—well, the night meeting for the Board of Commissioners is always 6:00, but for the public hearing, we always have it at 7:00. I'm not sure why we've done that all—through all the years, but we've always had the public hearing the Tuesday after the regular meeting, the third meeting, the first meeting of the month. Tuesday, June the 4th, 7:00 PM.
I'll propose that it's 6:00.
But it is an hour later than—like we met tonight. You're right.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to—okay.
Okay, a motion for the consent agenda. So move.
Second.
A motion and second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. And we have our—we've already done the proclamation. We presented that while we were out front.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
On that proclamation and your recognition of the basketball team, if we could entertain a motion to approve those, I don't think we did it in advance.
Oh, thank you. A motion to approve those two items. So move, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, and now, Scott, the resolution.
Yes.
Seeking support for House Bill 724.
Instead of House Bill 667, we're now talking about House Bill 724. This is on page 66 on your agenda package. This is a bill that is entitled—a bill to be entitled an act to prohibit the use of misleading telephone identification methods of telephone solicitations. This is legislation, as we understand, is both in the House and the Senate that is supported. I don't know, Janice, can you give any update as to the status? Are you aware? I think it's—it's moving forward, and we do expect it to become law, as I understand it.
Yes, it has already passed the House. It has moved to the Senate. This was a bill that was introduced by Representative Humphrey in our delegation. He's mentioned it to us on several occasions, and it is following its process through in the Senate. He is hopeful that it will pass, and so any additional support, I think he would welcome. If the board does not, I think it will continue on its course.
I think the third we're as in the resolution, saying that no telephone solicitor shall cause misleading information to be transmitted to users of caller identification technologies or otherwise block or misrepresent the origin of the telephone solicitation. This kind of sums up what this does.
Okay.
I gladly make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, and do we have a glance, a resounding second? Second?
They pray on people.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand.
Everybody would gladly say that.
And we get this out to Raleigh as soon as you can.
It'd be a sensible fine for them to break this, something on the order of about $20 million.
Yes.
I make a motion for that, too.
Lauren makes a motion for that, too, Tom. Okay, now we have our reappointments.
Yes, your first reappointment is to the Pitt County Nursing Home Adult Care Advisor Committee. The committee's commissioned through the Regional Long-Term Care Embolism, is recommending reappointment to Ms. Ellen Parker and Ms. Madeline Jones.
So move. Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor of these appointments, please raise your hand. Thank you. And next, Scott?
Next, you have both a reappointment and appointments to the Pitt County Committee for employment with people with disabilities, and the chairman for this committee is recommending the reappointments of herself, that being Pam Hollingsworth, as well as Jan Elliott, reappointment of—and Jan Elliott. Then you have Mr. John Krasmer, Janice Williams, as well to be reappointed. She's also recommending the appointment of Ms. Sarah Hutton, Ms. Nancy Usherman, Mr. Cam Coburn, Ms. Tanika Ward, and Mr. Keith Lechworth.
So move. We have a motion and a second.
And we do have, before you vote, there is one application. Sarah Hutton's application has only been on file for 10 days, so if the board would recognize this, it would be an exception to your appointment policy to consider this person.
And we have done that in the past, and many of these appointments sometimes often have to meet certain criteria, so we don't really have any choice.
And I'm sorry, one other thing to point out, they're also telling us that Pam Hollingsworth and John Krasmer have served their maximum of their terms. That would be the second exception to your appointment policy.
And we've done that in the past.
Okay. I amend my motion.
Motion to accept those.
To accept those.
Okay. And the second person who seconded me, was that you?
It still was Tom.
Tom, yes. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. And the reappointment to the Winterville Planning and Zoning.
Yes, you have a recommendation from the Winterville Planning Director, Brian Jones. He's recommending the reappointment of Robert Bryley to the Winterville Planning and Zoning, and this is an ETJ appointment, obviously extraterritorial jurisdiction, where you have folks represented on the town's planning and zoning board.
A motion?
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, all in favor? Okay. And we have a motion to go in and a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. And we have a motion to go in and a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. And we have a motion to go in and a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. And we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Okay. So be. And we said at the beginning of the meeting that we'd be going into closed session. Would you—
Motion to go in the closed session?
Yes, it has been requested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143318.11A3, to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and that public body pursuant to 143318.11C. When we call a closed session under this section and we intend to discuss an existing lawsuit, we must disclose that—disclose the parties in that lawsuit, and such disclosure being that the litigation would be the University of North Carolina and East Carolina University versus Pitt County Memorial Hospital and Pitt County.
Okay. And we have a motion—
Yep.
—to go in and a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Welcome back to our Commissioners' meeting after our closed session. We don't have anything to report from our closed session, so we will—
Commissioner comments.
—start with Commissioner comments, if we have any, starting with you, Tom.
No comment. No comment.
All ready to go home.
No comment.
I would just like to say the unfunded state mandates are continuing to put pressure on our Board of Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Would you like to make a motion for adjournment?
I'd make a motion for adjournment.
All right, so we'll all vote by standing.
Yeah, we'll do it.